I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Amendment Administrator, when you already, I'm sorry, I'm doing my Porky Pig tonight.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Please join us in an attitude of prayer. God in heaven, thank you for this opportunity to come together and work together. May we approach our tasks with wisdom and may we approach each other with respect. Bless this meeting as commissioners deal with details and vision, and may all those in attendance join together in advancing the promise and purposes of Clay County. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Are there any, is there a motion related to approval of this evening's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda discussion. It's come to my attention that, that we should go ahead and take 2022-53 off of this evening's agenda, and then we will revisit that at a future meeting. So I make that motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
That brings us to approval of the agenda as amended. Are there any, is there any other discussion on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Commissioner Thompson, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedule. Administrator?
Yes, the next meeting of the commission will be on Wednesday, March 2nd, at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Thank you. There are no honorary resolutions this evening. There are no discussion items listed, and there are also no public hearings listed for this evening's meeting. That brings us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda?
Commissioner, I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Motion's been made for the approval of the consent agenda as printed discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
Thank you. I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
And Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
It's loud. I got the loud one today.
That brings us to 2022-50. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-50 is a request for consideration of the waiver of fees and penalties for the taxes for Mr. and Mrs. Tenpenny. They did speak with the commissioners last week, and we do have Mr. and Mrs. Tenpenny on the phone if the council, if the commission has any additional questions, or if Ms. Tenpenny would like to speak.
The applicant is certainly free to speak now if they have anything they would like
My issue with this situation is, is that I mailed both of the checks, one for the personal property tax for $368, and that check number was 1908, and I mailed check number 1909 to the amount of $4,022.44 for my real estate tax. Mailed them in the same envelope with the proper statement, and I used the envelope that was, you know, sent with the statement. Mailed them both in the same envelope on the same day, and after I checked my account and saw that the personal property tax had been cashed, but the other was hidden, at that point, I was just assuming that it was probably going to be posted in a different, you know, a different day, and a different stack of checks, or whatever. So I rechecked my account for several days and noticed that it had never cleared. So that's when I contacted the office there at Clay County, and they said that they did not have that check, that they hadn't received it. And I disputed that because I, like I said, I mailed them in the same envelope on the same day. So I, the person that I talked to, and I believe her name was Ashley, not 100% sure of that, but she answered the phone, and she said, oh, well, hold by, she put me on hold, and then she came back to the phone, and she said, oh, I have the check right here, and that will post today. And I said, oh, great. We hung up the phone. I watched my account for a couple more days. Check never cleared. I called back again, and I talked to a lady named Doris, and she said that, she let me know that they did not have my check, therefore it had not been paid, and that I owed this penalty of $420, and I needed to mail it, like, immediately. So that same day, I went to the, I wrote a new check with the penalty and the taxes owed, went to the post office, did a registered letter, and mailed it. And then I called Doris to verify that they had received the payment. That's where I'm at with the whole circumstances. I'm feeling like we honestly made our payment, and somewhere within the office, that payment was either trashed or lost. And I was told that they put the trash of the envelopes in a trash bag each day, and those envelopes are sent off somewhere for storage, and that they would find that, that day of posting and look through those envelopes for my checks. But I never did hear back that they ever even did that. So I feel like I did our responsibility of making my payment on time. My husband and I, I feel like are upstanding citizens of Clay County. We've never been late or ignored any payment due to the county or any other responsibility. So I feel like we've been penalized for the mistake of a Clay County clerk, and we should not be penalized. I did my best to get everything taken care of, and it hasn't happened. So, and I understand it's my work against the Clay County office, but I know 100% that I paid those taxes, mailed my checks in the same envelope on the same day. That's pretty much my statement. I don't say or do, just trying to defend what I did. Now, what happened there, of course, I have no idea, only what I've been told.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from Ms. Tenpenny?
No.
No questions for me.
Okay. I was just, I'll go ahead and communicate that. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak on this matter? Is there a motion related to 2022-50? And I would remind the maker of the motion that they should indicate which box to be checked on the, on the resolution either approves or denies. So if that could be included in the resolution, I think that would be helpful. Is there a motion on 2022-50?
First Commissioner, could I get just a piece of clarity? We are only talking about waiving the penalties and interest, not any of the actual tax obligation itself.
That is correct. The, the amount at issue is $427.79 out of a, it looks like the property taxes were $4,022.44. Those are not being waived anyway, just the, just the $427.
Very good. And the only, I appreciate the clarif, the only reason I ask is, you know, the, the way we have it written on here is waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes. And I, and I think that just is the language that comes from the statute that, that allows for this option. So I think that's all the reason for that, but just wanted to clarify. Anyway, I'll make the motion that we approve 2022-50.
With the box checked that says.
Approved.
Approved. Thank you very much. Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-50 with the box indicating approves having been checked. Further discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion from anyone else in the public? Seeing none. Commissioner Carpenter, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
And Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Tenpenny. We appreciate you.
I love to know it passed.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you phoning in for this issue. That brings us to, we have, we have pulled 2022-53 from the agenda. That brings us to 2022-66 and 67, which appear to be companion issues. Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Resolution 2022-66 and 2022-67 are companion ordinances. They are a request for a sole source vendor from Central Square Technologies for the records management system for the Sheriff's Department. The following Resolution 2022-67 then is consideration of that agreement to enter into a contract with Central Square for those services, for the records management. And just as a record, this is previously before the commission and has been awarded ARPA funds to pay for this particular project. And Captain Agadarian is here in case you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Captain.
No, you didn't butcher it at all. Good evening, Commission. This is Captain Agadarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office, and as the county administrator noted, this is a motion that was approved for ARPA funding. And last week, we presented some detailed information, and most notably on this, with the sole source. I just think it's important to note that there are many municipalities in Clay County already using this system, and that is one of the primary reasons that we view the sole source as, as important to follow through on because, well, and additionally, using the, the agreement with Central Square and the other municipalities has allowed us a price break of nearly $50,000 on the original quote. So if you have any other questions, I would be happy to address them.
Very well. Are there any questions of the captain?
No, no questions, other than glad to see you well.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, good to have you.
Thank you for your patience with me the last three weeks. Goodness.
No additional questions. Thank you.
Very well. Is there a motion related to 2022-66 and 67?
Make a motion to approve 2022-66 and 2022-67.
Motion is made for the approval of 2022-66 and 2022-67. Further discussion? Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none. Is there any more discussion from the commission?
No discussion. Thanks.
Seeing none. Commissioner Thompson, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Thank you, Captain. That brings us to 2022-55. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-55 is consideration of the renewal of a lease agreement with Ann Weinmore Cole and Thomas Weinmore for the Jesse James Bank Museum. This comes to us from our historic sites in our Parks Division, and Deputy County Administrator Donna Kuntz is here to answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Hi, Deputy County Administrator Donna Kuntz. And yes, we brought this to your attention last week. This is an ongoing thing. We have been operating the museum in conjunction with the generosity of the Weinmore family since 1987, and we're seeking permission once again to renew for this year.
Thank you very much. It's, I'm glad we were able to, to celebrate our history and be able to, you know, have others learn from the past of Clay County. We've got a lot of history here for people to, to look at, and being our bicentennial year, it's even more of an important issue. Are there any questions of the deputy administrator?
No questions.
No questions.
Is there a motion related to 2022-55?
I move that we approve 2022-55.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-55. Discussion. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none. Any discussion from the commission?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
And Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-56. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-56 is consideration of a term and supply contract with Aqua Pest Solutions for Marina Pesticides and Services from our Facilities Division, and Deputy County Administrator Donna Kuntz is here to present and answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Hi, Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, this is a, a new term and supply, but this is a renewal from a vendor we've been using for a while. They specialize in having the EPA-approved aquatic products that we can use, and primarily, it helps us treat for spiders that like to collect around our showerhouses and our docks.
Thank you. We did have quite a spider problem in recent years, so I'm sure we're all glad to hear that they've, that's working out. Any questions of the deputy administrator?
No questions. Thanks.
No questions. Thank you.
Is there a motion related to 2022-56?
Make a motion to approve 2022-56.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-56. Discussion. Any comment from the public? Seeing none. Any further discussion on the commission?
No discussion.
Commissioner Thompson, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-52. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-52 is consideration of an agreement from a proposal with Gilmore and Bell for compliance services with regard to bond disclosures. And this is requested by our county councillor, Kevin Graham. Happy to answer any questions or present any information.
Councillor, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing additional. This is just our five-year agreement, $1,500 a year, as I recall. They've been doing this for some time for us, and they kind of keep us between the ditches, as the saying goes.
Very good. Is there a motion related to 2022-52?
I move that we approve 2022-52.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2022-52. Discussion. Anything from the public? Seeing none. Anything from the commission?
No, thank you.
Very well. Commissioner Carpenter, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-63, 64, and 65, which are companion items. Administrator?
Yes, 2022-63, 64, and 65 are companion ordinances for consideration of rezoning, preliminary plat, and final plat for the proposed subdivision Cardinal Hill Estate. Planning and Development Manager Kip Jones is here for presentation and answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, planning and zoning manager. So this is the rezoning preliminary and final plat for Cardinal Hill Estates that we discussed last week. I have it pulled up on the screen again. It is approximately 133 acres. The proposal is to subdivide it into eight lots. The southern lots, lots three through eight, are all 20-plus acres. Those would remain zoned agricultural. Lot one and two at the north end of the, of the parcel are smaller lots. They would be rezoned to our current standard for lots between five and 10 acres. Each of these lots meet one of the exemptions to the 20-acre minimum. Lot one is considered a farmstead dwelling because it has a house that was built pre-1985, and lot two includes what's called an agricultural land preservation, where a certain percentage of the land has to be preserved in its natural state. There is also a blue line stream that runs through the property, where there'll be a 75-foot stream setback each way of the center line of that stream. The purpose of dividing this would be to allow one single-family home per lot. You'll remember that we discussed last week about the developer being responsible for widening and double-chip ceiling Crockett Road, and then to do some dirt work along 112th and Crockett to improve the site distance. And then the Highway Department is going to install a guardrail on the north side of 112th to improve the safety of that intersection. Both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt this met all the county's regulations. We did receive opposition during the Planning and Zoning Commission and at last week's county commission meeting. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote six to zero to recommend approval with some conditions that are shown in Exhibit A of the transmittal. I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
I was, I think I'd asked this before, but I'd like to go ahead and ask it again for this weekend. That is, can you describe the lots to the, I assume, north of lots one and two that would be across the street? My question relates to how consistent are lots one and two with those lots that are immediately across the street?
So lot two is roughly a five-acre lot. Lot one is eight acres. And then if I identify on some of these, that's a 3.4-acre lot. That's 6.6. There's a larger one at 10, a five-acre lot. So most of them are between 3 and 10. There's another 10-acre lot, a five-acre lot. So they're pretty consistent, or in that range.
And lots one and two, is it contemplated to, is there, are there structures on there, or are there contemplated structures to be built?
So lot one currently has a single-family residence. So our general rule is we allow one residence per parcel, with the exception being an accessory dwelling unit, which is like a mother-in-law's quarters. It's a smaller version of a home. So unless the house is demolished on lot one, then the only structure they could build would be an accessory dwelling unit, and lot two would be allowed a single-family home and an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Thompson?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions. Thanks.
Very well. With that, if the applicant is present, then would like to say a few words. They certainly are welcome. It's not required, but certainly if you, if the applicant would like to speak, we'd be happy to hear what they have to say.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bryce Noon, Lee Summ, Missouri. Just wanted to reiterate Mr. Jones's statements. We feel like we've met all the regulations. We'll be improving the safety on 112th and Crockett, and are excited about the opportunity to bring larger lots like this out to that area. So, thank you. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
No questions. Thank you.
No, no questions. Thanks.
Very well. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? By the way, please, and I didn't think to say, but please make sure you identify yourself with the audio recording. Make sure the light is on and green, and speak clearly into the microphone.
Myron Neath, Liberty, Missouri. Yeah, thanks, Commissioners. Thanks for looking at this. I think you all got my letter on this, and I think that I don't, you know, I don't want to actively quote "oppose" kind of thing, but I think that this opens up a broader conversation with how we look at our land use plan, and maybe revisiting that, since I think it's been since 2008 since we have. And I think it's one of those things where, you know, in this case, this, this could open the door for something, because theoretically, if you approve this, which I'm not saying you won't, and that's fine, whatever the rule of, that you could, somebody could come in and buy the whole county up and break it into 20-acre tracts with hardly any opposition, according to the way the land use plan goes right now. And I think the question is, how, how far out, what density areas, whatever, do we actually take these large parcels and just break them up? I mean, it's kind of what we're opening the door to here. So I think, and I say, I'm, the time is right for anything. Development happens. It does. And I mean, in some ways, you know, things like this, you're almost, say, say development would go out in this area at some point. Well, in some ways, you're hurting development, because buying up a bunch of 20-acre lots, rather than just going with a big lot and breaking up into smaller ones, is going to be a much harder development thing to do. So anyway, it is, I think this is more on principle a little bit, of what's going on, and what could open the door to do. And also the fact that the land use plan, I mean, I'm, tell me if I'm wrong here or not, but it's not necessarily an ordinance or in, like, county law that says it has to do this. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a plan. It's a recommendation. Something may meet something officially, but yet there's exceptions to every rule, exceptions. And, and I think that, the P&amp;Z Board, I think, has gotten a little off in times of saying they, they think that if it fits the plan, well, we have to approve it. And they said that to me. They said, well, we have to approve this. And I go, not really. You're recommending something, is what you're doing. So, so I think there's just some principles involved here a little bit, and I think it may be open up a larger discussion on our land use plan and what, what we might do going forward. So that's just some comments on it. You know, would rather not happen, yes, but be that as it may, everybody will live, and everybody will be all right, and would, you know, be open to, you know, any questions or comments. And thanks for, thanks for looking at it.
Are there any questions?
No, no questions, although I did want to comment briefly on, on the remarks, but I can.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and do the questions, and I'll go to you. Commissioner Thompson?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, you know, I'm grateful for the, you know, testimony there. One question I have, obviously 2008 is a decent, decently long while ago. Do we have a sense of how frequently counties tend to update codes like these? And is there any discussion around revisiting that, or, and hypothetically, what would be the method by which we would initiate such a process?
Mr. Jones, could you give us a little bit of historical background on that, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to, and I, I don't know if the county administrator wants to make comments on that.
I was going to go to her. I thought we would do kind of what the historical was, and then go to the county administrator for any, any thoughts that she'd like to express.
So typically, a comp plan is anywhere from 10 to 20 years, and it needs to be revisited. And at the same time, so we have two documents. We have our comprehensive plan, which, Mr. Neath is correct, that's kind of a guide of how we see development. It's not a, a strict, you have to do it this way. And then we have our land development code, which is our rules and regulations, which if somebody wants to stray from the land development code, then they have to get a variance, which is an exception to the rules. So those, those two kind of work hand in hand. So I would see the process working where we hire or contract with an outside firm to work through that process, and we would, it would be quite the process where we'd have public meetings, you know, get public input, possibly have surveys, that sort of thing, and try to rework the land development code along with the comprehensive plan. The kind of unique thing is that the land development code is, amendments to that are recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved by the county commission, and it's the other way with the comp plan. Its recommendations are made by the county commission and then approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So these would be kind of two trains meeting in the night to get them approved, to be effective together. And we have had conversations about starting that process. So I think I've heard from Planning and Zoning Commission members, the county administrator, you know, citizens, that maybe that process needs to start, and we're starting those conversations.
Commissioner Carpenter, before I go to the administrator, do you have any follow-up questions for Mr. Jones?
No, thank you, definitely.
If the county administrator would like to make any comments this time?
Yes, thank you. So the Planning and Development Manager and I have had discussions about this particular project. So I think when we go through the budget process for 2023, you will see staff recommend to the commissioners to allocate funds to work with an outside consultant, because it is a very labor-intensive, and public engagement is a key component of a successful plan, and we'll want to do that and engage a firm to assist us with that. So we will be talking to the commissioners about that as we go forward with next year's budget.
Did you have any follow-up questions?
No, it's all very helpful from both of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, did that make any questions come to your mind?
No, I'm glad this was, this was brought up. There's been conversations with Mr. Jones and myself. I have been hearing from some citizens lately, and so I'm glad to hear that it's reached our county administrator, and we're able to hopefully move forward with this soon. So.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments on this issue? Seeing none. Is there a motion related to 2022-63, 64, and 65?
I'm going to make a motion to approve 2022-63, 64, and 65.
Motion's been made for the approval.
For approval.
There.
Getting there. We'll get there.
I almost cut you off there. Didn't mean to do that. Thank you. A motion has been made for the approval of 2022-63, 64, 65, with the box indicating approval checked. Discussion?
No discussion. Thanks.
Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none. Commissioner Thompson, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
That concludes the regular agenda for this evening. That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any items not appearing on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any officeholders who would like to make a comment on any issues not appearing on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any agencies who would like to comment on any items not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Does the county administrator have any comments that she would like to make at this time?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. First of all, I want to say thank you to our crews that were out last Thursday during First of all, I want to say thank you to our crews that were out last Thursday during the snowstorm. So just providing some information to our citizens, we put together some snow statistics that we're going to put out on social media, but, you know, our crews were out for 420 total hours of preparing for the storm and working the storm, and, and treating 755 lane miles of county roadways. And so did a great job, and we appreciate their efforts. And so this infographic that you see will be out on social media tomorrow to share information with our residents.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the commission? Commissioner Carpenter?
No comments, thanks.
Commissioner Thompson?
No comments, no comments, thank you.
Very well. I do have one comment. An issue has come up, we've discussed it in the commission meeting before in the discussion, and that is, as it applies to the property tax surcharge, surtax for businesses, there's going to be a forum on next Wednesday, the 2nd, at 7:45 a.m. at I-Works in North Kansas City, and there will be a panel discussion, and hopefully we will have a chance to discuss the, the issue and, and disseminate some information. Certainly, the speaking, among the people speaking will be the auditor, Mr. Hurlbert, and the assessor, Mr. Baldwin, and myself. So certainly, public is, is welcome to attend. There is no charge. The only problem is, it's a little early in the day, so hopefully it won't be cold. With that, I don't have any other comments to make. There are no approval of minutes, there are no previous sessions to be approved this evening. Are there any written reports to the commission? No written reports to be submitted to the commission at this time. There are no executive sessions. That brings us to recess and adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.